On the line, uh, Councilman LaShaw is here and Councilwoman, uh, Thomas is here. Any other council member on the line? Another council member on the line? Okay. With that said, Councilman LaShaw, I'm going to call these workstations to order. Uh, Councilman LaShaw, would you be so kind to give us the, uh, evidence?
Yes, I'll read it from the Holy Bible, King James Version, the Book of Thos, chapter thirty-one, the first verse. "And dear O Lord, do I put my trust; let me never be ashamed; deliver me in thy righteousness." I love this prayer. Dear Father, once again, we, the members of the Selma City Council, so I may be faithful to you, I'm bidding thee to hold hard, asking thee to, once again, in the midst of our deliberation, as we continue to do the business of the people. But after all, we have been elected for nothing else but to do the business of the people. And we know as long as we continue to keep the people in the forefront, we will always do what is right. And as long as we continue to lean and depend upon you, O Father, we know that you lead, we know that you guide us in the right direction and, and inspire us to do righteous by your people. We will always continue to remember to give you the praise, the glory, and the honor. In the Holy Name of God, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I, look, I see that we've had, we have Councilwoman Jackson and, uh, Councilman Johnson also joining us. At this time, uh, to the citizens' request, uh, we have Mr. Bill Sexton, uh, cellcom, Sexton, are you on?
I am, oh.
Hey, how you doing, sir?
I'm doing good.
Okay. You can go ahead.
Okay, I had spoken to, uh, Ms. Thomas earlier in the week and she was, uh, inquiring about, uh, the SkyCop units that we have available and wanted me just to say a few things, uh, on the meeting tonight. I don't know if, uh, if y'all seen them, but downtown, we've got one on the corner of Arch Revive and then we've got one in front of, uh, Place Selma Water Avenue. Um, we've also got one at an individual of the ones afar and we, uh, put up one for Judge Dunn at the, uh, city, uh, County Landville out by Orville and, uh, in hopes of catching some illegal dumpers and, uh, up so far to last month, we caught three illegal dumpers which saved the county probably in excess of ten thousand dollars. Uh, so the cameras, these, these things can be used for many, you know, purposes, not only safety and stuff for the citizens, but also, uh, to, to, uh, to help, like at Landville with the, with the, uh, illegal dumping in areas like that. Uh, the ones that we have up on Water Avenue and Arch Revive, it's, uh, CellCom and, uh, Arch Revive and Place Selma went in and they have been donated, uh, to the city of Selma and so once we, uh, working on getting the, uh, information to the police department or to the sheriff's department and those, they have been donated to the city of Selma. Uh, they've got tag reader cameras on them, license plate recognition. Uh, what, what they do is, uh, if, there's a stolen car that drives by, stolen tag, uh, it would pick it up because it's tied into the NCIC with the law enforcement, uh, it would notify, uh, Chief Wolf at the police department and they'll know that a stolen tag just went by that camera, a stolen car. Uh, uh, also it does, uh, be on the lookout, uh, we, a lot of these we're using, uh, up in Memphis, Tennessee, uh, Mississippi and Arkansas, down in El Paso, Texas. And what they're doing, uh, they're also be on the lookout or follow it, uh, if you've got something going on that you know the person, hey, they're in this car, this is the tag number to this car, that can be entered into a blacklist and when they drive by these cameras, then they, you would notify, be notified, um, you know, what area of the county or the city that they're in. Uh, we also have, uh, gunshot recognition available on these units. Uh, it's really, really a, a, a force multiplier for the city. It's like having more eyes on the street, you know, for the police department. Uh, we partnered with a company out of Memphis when we first started, uh, and got an opportunity to sign on with these guys and I got excited right away. It was exciting for the city of Selma, I was born and raised here and knowing a lot of the issues that, that we're having here, uh, I just see it as a way that they can help or deter crime, you know, because if you don't prevent it, uh, no. Uh, but can it help deter crime, be proactive, you know, absolutely it will. Uh, I got a, uh, email today from, uh, Memphis to where OCLO, the Mississippi Housing Authority, they bought two of these, they put them in the housing authority and the housing authority is advertising this on billboards in the city that said, "If you're looking for a set, safe place to live, call us, it's got your phone number, it's just for my SkyCop." Uh, so that's the kind of, you know, uh, uh, press and stuff that, that we're getting on the, on these cameras and, uh, we called to the police chief, I'm running around and we've looked at some hotspots in the city of Selma, uh, some of the county and, uh, just, you know, we're willing to, to help, to help the city, to help the police, to help everybody, uh, try to fight this crime about putting these up, we thought that we were being proactive. Uh, we hear a lot of times, you know, hey, I want to catch somebody, you know, and, and I'm a little bit different, you know, I don't want to catch somebody getting robbed or getting shot or loved, I want to prevent somebody and I think these cameras can make, be that proactive, uh, piece of equipment that can help the police and help the city. Uh, so I don't know if any of y'all have wanted these or whatever, but I would love to answer some questions if y'all happy.
Okay, Mr. Sexton, let me take this opportunity to thank you for coming before, uh, how much are these cameras and, uh, if we, how much are these cameras?
It's going to depend, we can put, uh, one camera on the box, up to five cameras. Uh, it could be anywhere, you know, from, uh, from three thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars depending on what you put on it. So what we can do is design the box just like you want it, you know, there might be an area, you only need one license plate recognition, there might be an area that you need three. So, uh, what we can do is pick one, get them, find out the areas that, that y'all might be interested in and we can design these specifically for that area. Uh, one question I would ask?
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Council.
Look, uh, we were talking, we're, uh, and, uh, can we use our oil department for this or we can't use the oil department for this? I thought once I saw that we couldn't use oil department for that. Well, we can take, off, it was a, you know, a safety issue, uh, if, if it was, you know, as a relation of safety, I think we can use oil department.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Councilwoman Bishop.
No, James.
I'm sorry.
I have did my, uh, my research on how, uh, it's a part of, uh, oilies, when it comes to, you have your district and every councilperson has it, when you're dealing with public safety, you can use your oilies, uh, cameras, especially if we have, like, uh, crimes and things that are going on in our area. And also I have, uh, confirmed this, I even, uh, confirmed it through the lead, uh, talked about, I've been working on this for a minute, uh, because in my area. And also I talked to, uh, I've been talking to Chief Fofo about it. Chief Fofo, uh, to give you, uh, uh, some information too, that he has been working on this too, so if he's on, could he, uh, speak and, and let you know, he has been talking to, uh, Mr. Bill?
Mr. President, before we go to Chief Fofo, I, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Where to talk to him?
Uh, are those cameras mounted? Are, are these cameras mounted, maybe, can we move them around?
Uh, the ones that we're putting up here, we put them on poles, but they're, they're just strapped on poles, uh, we've got one mounted on the side of a building saying, uh, if you wanted to move them, yes, we can move these, they're not, you know, dead.
I'm finding something.
Okay. If you want to be, they, they can't be.
The reason I ask because we have a lot of people house here, especially if our leisurely law or having the garbage receptacle, this is the reason I was sitting here is a hot mess, with people in the swimming, dumping their household garbage in and in where they see shit. And people need to understand what they're brought to justice that they cannot do this. I, I mean, I would ask you, I don't want to kiss nobody, I want to prevent them from burning this. I think if we, Mr. President, if we get these cameras, they can be used multiple ways, criminally, uh, with the, uh, uh, you know, the people committing crimes and violent crimes, and violent crimes, we see people dumping garbage, household garbage. And, uh, and I think we need to, and if we're going to get these cameras, we need to do a public service announcement, letting our citizens know that you're now going on sharing the camera, that this may, uh, prevent them from committing the, uh, garbage dumping that they are so in the swimming, ignoring now. We have to fix this garbage situation and all it is going to be done, we got to have a garbage sucker in their house. And this council, that Mr. Law had that disposal, which will allow to put this responsibility on the mayor's, so let's put these cameras up and let's catch them people.
All right, thank you, Councilman LaShaw. Councilman Bull, Chief Fofo, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Chief Fofo?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Chief Fofo.
Okay, when we first, uh, started talking to Mr. Sexton and, uh, about cameras, um, I gave, I met George Blanks, rode around with him and showed him the hotspots where we were getting a lot of shots fired, uh, so we have compiled a list of, uh, different wards that have, um, high crimes, shots fired, things like that. So, uh, they are aware of that and if the council sees where they want some other cameras, they can always add that to it.
Uh, Chief, Chief, I think you need to have your corner, the office officer, go around and identify these hotspots throughout the city where people are dumping this garbage and it can be a part of the area that these cameras are going to be put in.
Okay, that will be a problem though.
All right, any other questions for, uh, Chief Fofo?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Council.
There is a, there are mobile units for CellCom, there's a SkyCop, they do have mobile units available, so, uh, while we're looking at units that can go on poles, there also are trailer-based units that can be deployed, uh, at a moment's notice at different locations, possibly. So it may not be a bad idea to look at, uh, the purchase of some pole ones as well as looking at maybe the viability of getting one that would be, uh, you know, basically mobile-based, uh, and be able to go to hotspots or be around events or things like that to help perform, um, you know, some, uh, force multiplying, if you will, to help the chief out and the police department. Also, um, if the chief wants to move forward, this, can we not use the money from some of the funded but unused slots in the police department to, to look at purchasing these things for the initial plan he has on the hotspots?
How would you know about that? How would you use the phone?
That's it?
I, 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 I don't know that these are moving forward.
Yes, LaShaw. Oh, yes. Uh, Chief.
We can actually sit down and, uh, Blackness, they kind of get, um, our thoughts on paper for how many cameras and we can kind of, um, set it out on how we can move forward, we'll take care of the building on that.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Jackson, are y'all here, be, y'all sound kind of loaded tonight, okay?
Thank you, Lord, the police, President.
Okay, Councilwoman Jackson.
Um, Mr. President, I want to say and, and confirm this, uh, the chief and, uh, councilor voting, because I was, I was thinking, why don't we start with, uh, the chief bringing back a, a plan, um, and a vote determining which areas that they've already listed and then we can determine who our wards, if there needs to be any fillers and we should start in the police department, essentially or initially our authority in public safety and then, um, dumping. And so we'll, we'll look at that as part of the ward and let them come back with their initial assessment and go through the council.
Okay. Any other questions for?
And the police department, President.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions for Mr. Sexton, Mr. Sexton?
Yes, yes.
Councilwoman Bishop.
Did I hear him say that the cameras are three thousand dollars each?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. The, uh, you could put up, uh, a system in it, just to give you an idea, it could be between three thousand and eight thousand, but no, ma'am, the cameras are, uh, depending on what we do, uh, they're very reasonably priced and, uh, it, it's, it's really not bad at all for what, for what you're getting. Uh, the LPRs will be the most expensive of the cameras, uh, but the other ones, we've got some cameras, if you want, we can put up, that'll detect the difference between humans and vehicles. We've got a camera that'll have a, uh, a white light on, all night, it kind of lights up the area. Uh, we've got a camera diary to go on, it's got a, it'll talk to you, it's got a flashing blue light. Uh, so there's a lot of options that we have, you know, without the camera and the, and the box and the system, to fit your budget.
Okay, so, uh, does each area need a system or all cameras working off one system?
It, it's all working off one and they're in a box. Uh, and if you ask for more or something, if you'll call me or, or I can give y'all my phone number, whatever, I'll be happy to sit down and even ride and show you what we got up and how they're working, but it's all, everything's all within one box.
Okay, okay, so that's a system. So can you give me the range, you, you described a lot of cameras with a lot of different functionality, can you give me the range where one might start and then the lower price and the upper price, give me the range, please?
I think, uh, and, and my boss will probably fire me tomorrow if I say this, but, uh, the, uh, the least expensive, we're probably looking at three hundred dollars, the, uh, LPRs, they're probably seven or eight hundred dollars. And the LPRs, the license plate recognition, uh, so that's a range of the cameras and, you know, we'll have, uh, three, four, five cameras on a box, we got a recorder in there, uh, we can, there's tracking in there, we've got switches, uh, we've got flashing blue lights that come with these boxes, you can turn them on or off. Uh, we have found that criminals hate flashing blue lights, uh, so.
So from three to seven, the range is from three to seven, right?
Uh, prob- uh, probably seven to eight, yes, ma'am, depending on the number of cameras.
Okay, so somewhere between three to seven, right? Okay, thank you. President Boy, are you still on? Okay. Okay, we may have lost the President for a moment, uh, his phone may, may have gone out. Are there any other questions for our guests? And Councilwoman Bishop? Okay, Councilwoman Bishop, go ahead. Go ahead, Council. I have, uh, I have papers for everybody, uh, uh, placing your box, uh, because I went out to the, to the office and I saw and he, he gave me papers, uh, you can see a lot of information that he, that's on it and I'll place it in everybody's box. Okay, please do that, thank you so much. I will.
And, and you should, and reach out to me too, you know, I'll be happy to go show you what we got and, and talk to you personally and, and kind of, we've got one set up in the office here, so, uh, you know, I'll, I'll help you guys and show you and do everything I can to help y'all make the decision.
All right.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bishop.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, now to the mayor's report, Mayor Milton? Mayor Milton? All right, Attorney's Report, Senator Milton.
Good evening, Mr. President. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, to the council. Good evening, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, I sent a copy of the Juneteenth ordinance, um, along with the contract, uh, and a separate email contract for the service, retaining services of an individual to review and revise the personnel hand for the city of Selma. Uh, I'm not sure if that went to the entire council and, uh, and I need to, uh, to, to apologize for that, I did send it to the president, but, uh, without the secretary, I'm judging a lot of the ball in there and I don't think I typically, in my council, I can do that prior to this, uh, this session.
Let me look at it now, I can forward it to him, let me see.
It says it to everybody.
Okay, I'll, I'll, okay. All right. Uh, the Juneteenth ordinance was already voted and passed, uh, voted by, passed by the council. Uh, it lists basically the historical information and evolution of the commemoration of Juneteenth and the council asked that be reduced to an honest much consideration and approval and that, and you should have that before you.
Uh, I'm sorry, did we, did, have we put that on first read yet?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, though, first read tomorrow then. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Uh, the personnel handful, uh, contractor, not based on first, on first read either, it was, uh, voted upon by the council also, uh, but, and then I was asked to, to, to draft and revise it. I have some information that needed updating and I sent that to you. I had, uh, one or two questions, but they were mainly, uh, items, the, the most important item was the, uh, account from which the funds were to be taken, I did not have that information at the time of drafting of, uh, the, the document, the agreement.
I checked with Mrs. Wade, she would be getting that information, uh, too.
Okay, well then that could be based on first read also, then I'll ask tomorrow night. Uh, there was some discussion at, I believe, the last council meeting, you'll see the last council meeting, the meeting prior to that, concerning, uh, mowing the properties at, uh, the cemetery, this, uh, live, oh, live, oh, live, oh, Larissa Arer. Um, I was sent and I forget who sent it, it was either, uh, Mr. Coon or the mayor, someone sent me three pages of, a couple of graphic depictions of the layout of one of some of the cemeteries as well as a brief statement on the needs of, uh, scope of work as far as any cutting of the law is being concerned. That's extremely important because I got another request for a contract to cut one of the, the, uh, of the cemeteries and it was my understanding that the council had already agreed to consider, uh, placing an RFP for contracts to be bid upon to have their work done in all of the, uh, city, uh, city cemeteries. If I'm mistaken about that, I stand corrected, but, uh, that was my understanding.
Well, uh, tell me, President.
Go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
The council wanted to allow the mayor, who wanted to contract out each, uh, cemetery had a contractor, the mayor wanted the council to give him the authority to accept RFPs and that's what we did. So we were looking for this RFP that the mayor had accumulated.
Yeah, and I said this for the guy with Mr. John Coon and they, um, draw forth that RFPs were committed.
So I need to talk to Councilman Shaw, Office Committee, what you're saying?
He knew, he wanted to talk with the mayor, the mayor told, the mayor, uh, informed us through you, that he wanted permission to go out and, uh, accept RFPs for the contracting out of each cemetery with the intention of each, each cemetery having a wrong contractor and we can't even have the authority to do that.
To gather RFPs, because the RFP, uh, the request for proposals will come from the city, the, uh, request information, the RFP will come from the city, the proposals will come from, uh, prospective, uh, uh, contractors like that.
Right, absolutely. So, what, whether the mayor had done, he needs to do to start the process on this question, RFPs?
Let me clarify at that point and thank you so much. Uh, there, next matter on my report is the A.D.L., uh, consent order and payment under that consent order that the city was, was, uh, planned to, and due to violations at the, uh, Landville, the construction demolition Landville, uh, the mayor has already signed the consent order, he was looking to get the check to be sent in with that. Uh, there was some question about how fast that check would be cut. I was told one thing is in that it would probably be the fifteenth of this month instead. I just want to confirm that that check needs to go in along with the, the signed consent order and, uh, the renewed corrective action plan, which I've already submitted, but would be, we submitted with the consent order.
Yeah, I talked with Mrs. Wade, talked with Mrs. Wade and there would be in this upcoming week check, uh.
Yeah, it's forty-five days, we have, I'm sorry, we have forty-five days from the date of that, um, the report, which is, which I think was July twenty-third, to have that in.
I understand how much time we have, but we don't want to wait forty-five days to send it in, because what, here we are.
I understand, but nobody pressed the urgent suit, I, so, President Boy and I told him, we agreed that it'd be on the upcoming, uh, check.
And this is a lot on the land, a lot on the landfill, I would like to add a check, so I said this morning, attorney, on peace, this comment, by the landfill.
All right, Council. I think I put the phone number on the phone line also.
Yeah, I, I.
They'll stand for the landfill.
Okay, we do have, uh, the landfill, the election, Mr. Moser Williams on the phone and then that consent, to come with certain things the city agreed to do in order to follow to compliance with A.D.M. regulations. And Mr. Moser had met with, uh, the council, facilitated Public Works General Service Committee to inform us of the needed equipment and there was four pieces of equipment that he's going to need in order for the city of Selma to begin to come into compliance with A.D.M. regulations. However, he indicated that there are two pieces that is needed like right now, but the other two he can get by as long as the council moves forward and acquire. There was a Public Works General Service Committee meeting that was held there as necessary and, and there was a consensus of the committees who granted to the council that they need to move forward on purchasing, uh, two pieces of equipment, one was a roticulator dump truck at a hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. The second piece of equipment was a sixteen fifty Doherty at eighty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. The other two pieces of equipment, which is a Volvo rubber tire wheel motor at a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven oh three and a skid, tier compact tractor loader at thirty-six thousand. The treasurer recommended that we remove the, with precedent, the roticulator dump truck at sixteen fifty Doherty and began to, uh, engage in the budgetary process for the sale of two pieces of equipment. Um, uh, Ms. Wade indicated that the money was there and, and she recommended that the general fund budget is increased by two hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and six, two, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars to purchase the following, following the equipment, that is the two pieces that I had made mention. Mr. Moser Williams is, is on the line, if you don't have any questions pertaining to this request.
Mr. Moser, are you on the line? Mr. Moser? Mr. Moser, can you hear me? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I hear. Okay. Uh, I also want to add something to that, uh, I got, I finally got a contract I got a vote for, uh, another day that's coming that's this for A.D.M. and that, uh, putting up with the self-pimping and the regrapping of the areas behind the ham pits and also placing our permanent markers. Uh, I got a guy from Smith Construction, I submitted, I believe I, I text you a copy of that, I've also texted, uh, Ms. Wade a copy of that along with, uh, the city attorney a copy of that and that's on that spare board also, that has to be done before A.D.M. talks pack.
I see Ms. Wade, Ms. Wade?
Uh, I was just gonna, I, I didn't know Moser was gonna respond, uh, respond with that, so I was just gonna ask if you add that amount, and if you could, for one that, uh, President, uh, Councilman LaShaw just added, you add that, I think it's seventy-nine hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would just add that to increase the budget. If you would just add that to increase the budget by that amount, so we thought.
We can just move forward, that's the consent agenda on tomorrow. Go ahead, Mr. Moselle.
Okay, uh, and also, uh, uh, we're, until we get that equipment, right now, we're not covering any trash, we're just packing trash, the dump truck we had, the whole, the whole hydraulic line was, at least the truck up, it's, it's a thong, it just, it just went out, it, it, I mean, it costs more to buy another, I mean, to fix it than to buy another truck, so at this point, we are not covering any dirt, so it's very imperative that we try to get that, uh, reached the way the truck as fast as it can, we start covering trash before they get back, 'cause, you know, we're moving, trash constantly coming in every day. I mean, it is neat, it looks good, it's neat and clean, but it's just not covered.
And Moselle, once the council, once the council go here and approve this on tomorrow, how quickly can we get this settled on, get settled?
Uh, it, it can be approved, he has, probably a couple of days, uh, two, three days after that.
Okay, thank you.
If, uh, if, if, once the board gets expedited, I go ahead and prepare the first one, so the council can move forward, I mean, once the council move forward on, then help us help with the process of getting the pay, so we can have the list.
I think, I think it's a check, Mr. President, actually be given for that to be done, without the, for us to ask you board on it tomorrow.
Yeah, as I said, pretty long this test, so we can move forward with it. And also, in the meantime, like, uh, as Wade said, with the, with the P.O., we can do both on site and tag, so we can move forward.
Okay, Mr. President, Mr. President, the other part of that is he needs fire workers on there, and I'm thinking we've already authorized the mayor to move forward, we get those employees, correct?
Uh, I don't think we can do is just make the slots available, I don't think we made the five, five slot, slots available, I don't know, like.
Well, we can make that, we can make those five slots available to consent order tomorrow, I think that would be wise.
Yes, sir. Alright. Any other questions?
I have one.
Okay, hold on, I, I think I heard Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilman Johnson.
I got a question, can the other?
Go ahead, Councilman.
I want to know, describe the other type of equipment that you were talking about, other thing like the dumpster, the other type of equipment, what does that type of equipment do?
Okay, uh, the, the, the dozer, the other dozer, what that is for, that's a backup machine for the trash packer we have now, when the trash packer goes down, we're usually waiting, you know, four or five days, you know, to, we process our P.O., and trash is steadily coming in, and we're not packing it, all it does is, all it, all they do is they drop it, and it sits there, and so, by the time, uh, we get the machine fixed, we're looking at two or three weeks down the line, where we've been accepting trash, and it hasn't been processed in any form of fashion, and that's what that backup dozer is for. It's also for doing other things around the landfill, while we're doing trash, we can be recovering other areas that A.D.M. has problems with, with the roads, you know, the roads that went over the rain, the dirt running off the trash, and has to constantly be recovered, be recovered maybe every month or so, so we can use that machine often to recover. The, uh, the, uh, the front end of the tire loader, that's like another excavator that's just on wheels, in case the excavator goes down, we can still load dirt, it's also a multi-use vehicle, so I only chose to use it to load dirt, we can use it to level our grounds, uh, you know, on our roads, our roads that are very big issues out there, with those heavy trucks that come through there on the big any places, you have to constantly maintain your, your, your roads and stuff, and our street care, that's also a multi-use vehicle, it's gonna come with a bush hog on it, it's gonna come with a fork, so like, we can use it as a fork bill, and it's also gonna come with a ditch digger, where we can maintain our runoff and runoff system, and that's very important, that's one that A.D.M. was very adamant about, is our runoff and runoff system, we gotta constantly create drains for that rain to run off the landfill to the proper area where it's supposed to go, and right now, we've just cut the ditches with the blaze of our other machines, trying, you know, trying to get it right, I mean, we're just really good, and we're, we're working on it really hard, but, you know, you can only do so much with these people, you know, so hopefully, with these other people that can run off the machine, we can be monitoring those issues on a daily basis, instead of a monthly basis.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Moselle. Anything else, you got the phone up, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah, so, I, I just want, I wanted to know, uh, if, if we get this type of equipment, you know, he, he says the name, but I wanted to know what, he explained it to me, what it does out there, oh, with the trash out there in the landfill.
Alright, thank you, I had Councilman Johnson, then Councilwoman Minchin. Did I go there?
What, what did Mr. President?
It was, I think it was me, it was me, it was me, Mr. President, I'm trying. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I, I need to get off, but I want to be generally about fifteen minutes.
Okay, that's cool, I, I, I'll be looking for you. Okay, then, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Minchin?
Okay, uh, Mr. Moselle, you mentioned there, there's always so much you can do with two people, I thought we got some more people, do you not have?
Oh, yeah, 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 we're working on that now, like, uh, Councilman Louie said, they're gonna go ahead and add the slots, I guess, tomorrow, and, and so, I guess as soon as you guys add the slot, I can get with the mayor, and I can start, you know, interviewing to get people out there.
Uh, we, we've gone with the people you want out there, and I thought you all would move it forward.
Well, no, from what I understand, haven't, this vote we had it tomorrow on the consent agenda, is that correct, Mr. President Louie?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's supposed to be added tomorrow, it hasn't been added yet.
So, what do we want out, we have got these forty, that, we already invited forty positions to be placed into this budget, and for this to move forward.
I have the salary. Uh, ma'am?
What are the salaries? This is, huh? What are the salaries, did they give you titles and salaries?
Well, basically, all the thing we do is just create positions. Now, I look at the, I just look at the check the minute's gone. I took the minutes before tomorrow, I, I give it to her.
Okay, I'm asking because again, we have, again, there's always so much two people can do, and that just, that song is like a, like a, it is dead now, that song is dead, and so, we can move forward as we speed you, as we can on this, we don't have to hear that song again from this department, so let's see those people on here, and the other thing is, I heard you mentioned an es- the excavator, is this the excavator that people have been asking about, where is the excavator, Mr. City Old, or is this a brand new excavator that you mentioned, Mr. Moselle?
No, the, are you referring to the one, that we're getting rid of the purchase, that's not, the one we're getting rid of purchase is not an excavator, it's a rubber tire loader, it's like a, a bucket on wheels, and what we're gonna use that for is, when the excavator is being serviced or when it goes down, we can still load, uh, reticulated dump truck with dirt and move dirt, you know?
So, it works because dump it with the excavator?
Yeah, it, it's kind of like, uh, an excavator, but it's, it, what it is, it's on wheels. See, the excavator can't move, it has to sit still, it can't keep out of those tracks, because it's on track, and you can't run it, you know, halfway across the landfill back and forth, because, you know, we're here to follow the track, which, which happened while we had replaced track, but this does, it's on rubber tires.
So, you say the excavator can't move, you were saying that the excavator can't move, it's obvious it can move because we don't know where it is, do we know what the excavator?
The excavator's on the landfill.
The city's excavator.
Yeah, our excavator's on the landfill.
Okay, so.
We use our excavator every day.
Okay, so that's where the excavator is, the excavator is with you, the excavator that's owned by the city is with you all.
Yeah, it's, I come out to, we just talked about that excavator about two or three years ago.
Okay, okay, but you need to know where the excavator is.
Oh, it's two years ago. Are we talking about the same excavator?
I'm not sure we are.
The one that was just about three years ago, right, the capacity?
I remember we purchased one about two or three years ago, yes.
Yeah, that's the one we're using now, the other day.
Okay, I see.
Also, too, uh, Mr. Moselle, with, once we allocate on five slots, I guess we definitely need to talk about job descriptions for each one of, as well as the salaries.
Right, right. So, I, I, they're, 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 they're just basically, I'm gonna be general, like you're at the landfill, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't you have any, Mr. Moselle, don't you have a description like that already, that you could send us?
Uh, no, I don't, no, ma'am, I have a description of what each employee is gonna be doing, but I don't have, you know, a title for the employee himself, himself, but I just have a top description of what it, what each employee is gonna be doing.
That's what I mean, this is putting us, is just, is just putting us back again, so why don't you send us what you have, sir?
Alright, Councilwoman Jackson?
Mr. President, uh, how many positions are in the budget currently? We created five, um, did we have five now, did we have three, you know, we employed two?
There's only two, it's only two.
It's only two people in the budget, or are there only two people hired, because we have more than, no, it's three. Only three people in the budget, are we trying to, uh, and that's two, we already have one or two, so are we trying to take people in the landfill? Well, are we trying to get a total of five people in the landfill?
No, we're trying to get a total of seven people altogether.
Okay, so we don't actually need five positions to be created, since we have three in the budget, obviously, four, and so, we need to take the positions that are currently?
Let me explain, let me, let me explain.
Moselle, Mr. Moselle.
Yes, ma'am, let me explain what, what the situation is.
Moselle, I was speaking, my question is, the president, and then?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay, okay, so we have three positions currently, and we need seven, is that correct, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am, I know you asked for additional five, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you asked for five.
Along with the, two, I, I'm concerned, uh, two, right, Mr. Moselle?
There's, there's currently two of them at the landfill, because you talked about with, when, when Mayor Friday was there.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm not talking about when Mayor Friday was there, what I'm talking about, and I have to raise my question now to you, Mr. Moselle, and what I'm talking about is what is in your budget, and what's going to be counted in, and allocated in the, your budget?
Okay, right now, my budget, there was three, but hap- what happened was, this was the mayor did, uh, when I took over, Mr. Friday, Mr. Friday was part-time with the county and part-time with the city, and so, the city paid him so much, and the county paid him so much, so, when I interviewed with the county, when I turned down the county, and decided to come full-time with the city, what the mayor did was combine those two salaries to be able to pay me to take the job.
Okay, so the ma- mayor made, mayor made a budget adjustment without somebody before the council, or because that's what you did, and they had to come before the council, so am I right, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just wanting to make sure, so the mayor, the mayor did something improper in for it, and, um, just the budget without seeking the council's approval, and so, currently, we really don't know how many positions that we have in the budget, I, Mr. President, I move, I ask that we explore this a little bit further, I don't know, because the song has been, is that, is that, right?
Um, right, I check, um, Councilwoman Jackson, uh, please, I, I understand what you're saying, the mayor, uh, later in the race, we're here, but according to the budget that the council approved, there are three positions, and one was Mr. Friday's position, one being Moselle, and one being Marcus Thompson's position, which he occupied, so, according to what the council approved, there are three positions in that budget.
Right, and so, there are three positions in our budget, however, the mayor made a budget adjustment, and it's paying someone outside of another slot, and so, he's actually taking it, um, so it's the funding for that position that we actually have, in our budget is not there, because he's actually been receiving the funds for it, is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, that's the reason, right, that is, um, so, what I would like to suggest is that, even though we, we're tired of this past song, and I agree with, uh, um, Madam Houghton, that we need to do something, it's, it's, but we need to look at this budget a little bit further, because obviously, some things have been going on without the council's approval, we need to make sure that everything is okay, and we need to make sure that we have a detailed, detailed, uh, job description, and.
And, sure.
That, that will be paid, because obviously, the position, our budget is not being adhered to, and we might be in a situation like we are with the fire department, so I don't want to see that again, and if we could slow down, maybe have, I don't know, uh, over this, uh, budget work, I guess budget work, uh, Councilman, Miss, may handle this, or maybe we need to look into it, is that, that's no matter.
And also, too, I'm trying to mouse, if you can be part of that, is helping with the job description, 'cause that's gonna be very critical.
Mr. President, it's for jobs.
Alright, Councilwoman, woman, Minchin? Councilwoman Minchin?
Okay, okay, yeah, I'm tired of this past song, because the last time we met, are we saying that no, there's no moving forward has been done, this, I say, job description doubt, right, and administratively, and, and, and with the council legislatively, are we saying, we have a, we have a, right, so, are we saying that no one was assigned to work on this, and are we saying that not one single thing was done, since this was there last was on the bottom with us, and now, we're back again to say that start, we settle with that?
Well, as far as we can, uh, the service and job description, that would have to go through the H.R., uh, executive, uh, branch of government.
Okay, we talked about this the last time, what I'm asking is, are we saying nothing has been done since we talked?
Yes.
And, and, so, when we come back again in two weeks, when we come back again in two weeks, where are we gonna be?
And that's why I asked the Senator Madison to also, uh, help with this endeavor.
I'm trying to imagine, are you gonna make yourself available, I, I heard you say something about you don't have a special carry, you've been doing a lot of things, are you gonna make yourself available to this?
Yes, I already said that too, that I would make myself available, I just don't know if, if anyone, anyone heard that, but I wanted to comment to on, on a couple of things that have just been said, uh, by both Mr. Moselle and some council members. Uh, the consent order from A.D.M., uh, was received, and, uh, I think it was the twentieth, December the twenty-third of July, uh, this, this way you just mentioned the date, and I, I didn't have it in front of me right now, but the consent order was received, with the council voted on a corrective plan of action, uh, to include action by the Southern City Council to fund four to six positions, thirty days from the date of the response, of the response to the consent order, the response, response to the con- to the consent order, uh, goes in, was, uh, now, it hasn't, it hasn't, hasn't actually, uh, gone in, yet I responded to the proposed, the proposed, the, uh, the consent order now has been received, that's why I was asking about payment earlier too, we now have to have a signature on the consent order, which the mayor has already provided, I, I believe, we have to send in the corrective action plan, uh, which I've already drafted in consultation, and, at direction of the council, but the consent order, the, uh, corrective action plan was not included in the consent order, because we were given, and are being given the opportunity to respond to the consent order, see if there's anything with which we disagree, and so far, as of yet, I haven't seen anything, but the corrective action plan, the signed order and the check haven't gone in yet to A.D.M., uh, we have forty-five days to do all of that, this, this way, uh, timeline is correct on that, uh, that's when the time frame begins to run, where we're expected to institute the corrective action steps, which is number one, securing four to six individuals to fill, and I think the number five got thrown on somewhere, I forget, that was some discussion back and forth, uh, what Mr. Moselle had mentioned, uh, more than five at one point, so I just wrote action by the Southern City Council to fund four to six positions, thirty days from the date of the response to the action of the Southern City Council to furnish previously. to the action of the Southern City Council to furnish previously identified needed equipment would take place sixty to ninety days from the date of the response. And three, that would be identifying applicable city of sale or enacted ordinance already in, on the books or legally, uh, promulgated to prohibit and by violators of the legal dumping of household garbage or trash. That was set, the timeline set to come stat was sixty days and ongoing because that won't happen. Won't happen in a few days, or a few weeks. Uh, that was the corrective action plan. As the council submitted and agreed to, and it will be re-submitted. It's already been submitted as part of the proposed order, but it's going to be re-submitted with the actual consent order, the check. And the mayor signed, signed up after the, uh, of the order. And I have to meet Mr. Councilman Short, the committee, uh... Yes, I have. I'm quite busy. I'm also supposed to be interviewing, uh, the secretary hopefully as soon as, two or three days from now. But, but, uh, I'll be happy to meet with, uh, Mr. Lishore and, uh, his, his committee. Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Can you hear me? I think I heard Councilwoman Jackson and Councilman Short.
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Mozzell, can you give the mayor's office description of Tom Brad, the H R department? And is the council a, um, job description? Um, so we can comply with the corrective action plan and accept what's necessary to ensure that we're compliant? We need the job description, we need the salary range, and we need all of those things so we can approve and amend the budget. Uh, and those come from his office to the council. We don't, we don't, we don't do that. And so can you get that so we can make sure that we don't then approve on our end?
Sure, and I think Mr. Mozzell should be definitely a part of that discussion because he's supervising the work out there.
Right, I've, you know, the mayor is on day-to-day operations, so I, if the mayor, he's supposed to be a...
Sure, sure. I'm just suggesting, I'm just suggesting that Mr. Mozzell be included in those discussions.
Yeah, well, who else is the man being necessary? You just mentioned that, um, you just want, as a council, we want to vote on the appropriate manner in the time frame so we can ensure that we've done our part. But you haven't given us the information to do our part. So the council is to approve these blocks, but the council, the council is not H R. And we, and we don't, and not on day-to-day operations, so we can't tell them what days they work, how long they work. We can't tell them what type of work they're doing because that's not our role. But we can provide the funding if you give us all of the information.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilman Short, then we'll move on to the next item.
If I'm not mistaken, when, uh, when Attorney Counsel was having conversations about A D M's moving and the need that is needed to have us committed to supply. Especially now, the number forty, this is nothing new. I thought this council was under the impression that the number that was already told what they needed was far off the concept of agenda. I mean, the content agreement or whatever we said to A D M has to be going to come into play. Um, I feel that the pressure, the council is already made these stock available.
That's what Councilwoman Johnson mentioned also. I would check with, uh, Ms. Harris on tomorrow to make sure.
Well, Mr. President, I live for a second, you have made them available. Okay, let me...
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mozzell. You're welcome. All right. Go ahead, Attorney, uh, Madison. Uh, the adlet, uh, Attorney Brian, uh, Teller, sitting here for the email, asking if I would, uh, uh, raise again the issue with the, uh, the council of considering the demand that was made. I believe I presented that to you at the last council meeting. And I told him that would have to be done, obviously, at, uh, the what session at council meeting tomorrow night, what session tonight, council meeting tomorrow night, that I would get back with him, actually. So, uh, it's, it's a situation of having him have provided the council the contract, contract, uh, without sign. Uh, that needs to be discussed and whatever special of the council is involved. Okay? Uh, Councilman Short? Uh, Attorney, Attorney, are you saying that there is no signed contract with the company? Uh, yes, and I think I followed in that contract to, uh, uh, the council, uh, handed forward before my secretary left, uh, current floor.
And there's no, there's no serious, serious contract?
No, sir.
Then you still have a real contract.
All right. Councilwoman Thomas?
I can't...
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Attorney Madison. Uh, the amendment contracts also were discussed the last time. I've missed, uh, I think it's Watson, uh, we heard, Waikin. Wa- Waikin, uh, yeah, sent another email outlining some of the things that we had already, uh, discussed last, uh, council meeting. But what she basically was doing was pointing out that in the discussion, the council, uh, had addressed, was attempting to address some of the things that had already been, uh, suggested. And one of which was to be filed, lettered to the individuals who owed it, J. Runney, and give them thirty days to pay them. They don't pay, they can't live. Uh, that was, as she said, was procedures what's already been done, suggested be considered for being done with the individuals on that list. Uh, I think she highlighted probably where we need to start. And hopefully it winds up that we collect or can't collect. Go ahead, take pick of life. Councilmember, you should have, you should have received a copy of the, uh, list from R D S.
He said that. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Those businesses that, that go along with business, right? Oh, they're sitting there, what option do we have to go up there?
Uh, that's a question that I would have to ask her. Uh, to my understanding, in the past, they still need to make some type of arrangements, uh, to remit the taxes while it's in...
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of what I often, we should just fish them off the hook. If there are no ones, then there's always sitting money they need to pay.
Uh, yeah, and, and Mr. Lish- uh, Mr. Lishore and Mr. President, I think that they're not automatically on the hook because they're, they're no longer business. The issue was known to be service, notice and service finding the individuals. Because if they're not in business, they probably are not eager to be found. So locating them and giving them notice and serving them would be the issue. Uh, it's still gonna involve the same processes and the, and the divisions that are in business. It's a question of finding them and giving them notice.
Yeah, if they're easy to be found, just find them.
Okay. All right, I don't know, maybe, maybe my hearing, maybe my ears tonight are, um, clogged or something. I can't really hear tonight. But go ahead, Attorney Madison. Uh, there were, uh, I think, three contracts that were given to me, uh, that the council has not considered yet, uh, by separate, uh, individuals on the council. I, I spoke to one earlier about, uh, grass cutting, I think, at Lorenzo Harrison Cemetery. Uh, I also had, uh, one contract submitted today, uh, this afternoon. I'm asking for more time to get those contracts drafted. I, I really already have made a call to the Attorney General's Office, not about the audit, not about audit, about contracts specifically. And, and, uh, I'm waiting on a call back from an investigator in the Attorney General's Office. So I wanted to ask, please delay submitting of those contracts. They're, they're not drafted because of what I have seen. Uh, I don't want to go into any more details than that. I would probably take an executive session to do that and can't do it tomorrow night, which can't get notice before tomorrow night. So I'm asking, please not, not any contracts, the council, the council, they're not already voted on. So please not ask me to draft them until such time, as I've talked with the, uh, investigator in the Attorney General's Office. And I'll get back to the council on what I found out.
Mr. President.
Council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Johnson?
What did she also say, Mr. Speaker, it might not be clear? Did the executive contact with Attorney General again about contracts?
Not about the ordinance, uh, concern contract, no. That's not what I said specifically was, it was not about the ordinance, the council's ability to sign off on contracts and may have asked the bills or give. It's not the issue. That's not what I'm seeking input on. I'm waiting back, waiting for information from the investigator, an investigator in the Attorney General's Office.
But this move that you're making sounds like this is also telling us you will not be doing any more contracts until you hear about whatever it is that you need to hear about. So you will not be, again, are we back at where, again, you will not be doing contracts, sir?
That's not what I said, um, um...
That's why I want clarification.
Clarification is until I can speak with the investigator. And I've got a call, waiting on a call now from the investigator.
So we're saying the same thing. So you will not be doing contracts until you hear from your...
No, we're not saying the same thing. No, we're not saying the same thing.
Please, please clarify. Please clarify.
I just sent, I just sent, I just sent a contract to, uh, the council for the, the personnel manual review and revision. So I'm not refusing to do contracts.
Okay. Okay, so we can, so we can, so we can...
You can expect me to give, you can expect me to get back with you hopefully in less than twenty-four hours on, on next...
That's all I need to know. I have to have clarification sometimes because sometimes I hear one thing and it's, and it's another. Uh, so I needed clarification and you gave it, so thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Johnson. Uh, Councilwoman Jackson and Councilman Johnson.
Okay, so maybe you have clarification, Councilwoman, because I did not. I thought I heard you heard. Uh, we don't send you any more contracts. Uh, I heard we don't send you, it, it, that, I, I heard we don't send you any more contracts. And I asked you about a contract for Denmark today for trees that needs to come down in that area. Now, what you might be contacting the investigators about, I don't know. But we have been held up for months because of you and the mayor. You particularly because you, you were the one that advised the mayor to stop all contracts. It was your email that he sent to the council saying, we're stopping all contracts because of what the, um, public assembly has stated. Not looking at any tax, not looking for any revenue, not looking at any attorney general, let's stop, stated on this. And so we've been held up. We've been put to a halt for several months because of this administration. We have been battered and bruised because of the things that are going on with this administration and the work that we cannot get done in our board. And two weeks after we get an approval and get contracts done, we're now in the same position. And you're telling me because you're saying, um, tomato, and I'm saying tomato, if we're saying different things. That's not true. What you just said is, please do not send me a contract. What I'm saying is, I want my contract tomorrow to be approved by the council. And I have everything in place. I have the discretionary funds available. I have the licensure and I have the, uh, the, uh, the required business, business license and insurance. I have everything necessary. You have a copy of, of, or you just see, excuse me, a contract that you did, did two weeks ago. All needs to be phased to figure. And I want my contract. I need to make sure that this tree is handled before it's on someone's car. And I have a email where I said to you all that saying, I want to tell you that you're paying twenty thousand dollars for a car rather than eight fifty to turn this tree. Now, I don't know what the investigator may say, but I want my contract.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wilson, Mayor Wilson. Councilman, the last council meeting, I believe four contracts were provided by me. One to you, you, Councilwoman Jackson, one to, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, uh...
Yes.
One to, one to Councilwoman Lishore. And, uh, I think there were two contract, contract, two contracts provided. One of the others, uh, you, Councilwoman Jackson. Two contracts. Uh, I've also provided a contract concerning the personnel handbook to President Bowie and the county council, uh, yesterday. So I'm not refusing, give, give, again, a mischaracterized what's going on. I'm not refusing to do contracts. I just did five of them, five within the last two weeks. What I said was exactly what I meant, that I am waiting on a call back from an investigator in the Attorney General's Office, not an Attorney General's attorney opinion or another opinion to sup- supplement the Attorney General's opinion we received. Uh, I was waiting on an investigator coming back and I was hoping to have that call response by tomorrow. That's what I said.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. President, what you saying was, please do not send me any contract. That's already...
Not before tomorrow, not before tomorrow. Not before tomorrow, not before... No, 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 Attorney.
Hold on, allow me to say, please do not send me any contract. I send you a contract. So if you were saying, please, after the contract that I've seen up until today and from the previous council meeting, meaning I will not have any more available tomorrow, that's one thing. So are you telling me that my contract that I sent you prior to this stage of this evening will be available for us to vote on tomorrow? Are you telling me that?
I'm telling you that as soon as I get back from the investigation, I hope to do. I know this is tomorrow. I know this is...
Okay, but, but exactly what I'm saying. So this, this is, this is my issue with, with all the semantics that we keep having. You, the administration, the, the way that you all have some things, is that a phase today? You know, when Councilwoman Jackson there, I'm always with contracts that we may not be able to resolve. I will not have this ready. You've been... Okay, yes, then, I, I see. That's what she said to me. And seeing that, if you were calling, I'm saying, I mean, this is near fifty. But, uh, the fact of the matter is, I have already have anything on that. We just did a contract off two weeks ago and this, this tree needs to come down. If, if the constituents, the citizens are seeing work finally been done and are finally seeing the thing. We just got approval on July twenty-fourth from the Attorney General's Office. And that's why you see work moving. Now, what am I, what are we supposed to say again? Well, the attorney's joke, like it was necessary to ask enough, bring enough, yet again. Uh, if you have a, put something out, because obviously you were expecting that answer by tomorrow, so you missed something prior to today. What, what, what is the communication with the council, saying council members? I have a question. There has arisen a concern that I was bringing before you. So we may need to have a, 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 or this is my concern. I, I'm not able, I wish, in your words, that you would send me any more contracts right now. See, and that's, that's the type of things that I'm talking about. You're holding up, you're holding up process because you're asking a question that you asked two weeks ago, that four of a week ago, or yesterday, or last week. That you could have made us aware. There's no communication that I'm talking about. I mean, you could have readily said that at two o'clock this afternoon, when I called you, phoned up on the email, that you said you never received on yesterday. I mean, this is lack of transparency. This is the lack of communication, the lack of communication that I'm talking about. That we, we're talking about, and we're once in in a position that we can't ensure the safety of our citizens who possibly pedestrians could be walking by in the landfall. You, I, I know that you, um, heard that, that someone was asking, driving down the street in a tree fellow and killed on the park, and so that, that was what seemed to happen. And this citizen has called us and this gentleman, I think, he has got this tree on his hands. They have noticed that this tree is on. I got all the information. I'm bringing it around. This is with, with me on tonight. This is just having a, a open communication this afternoon, saying this is, this is my concern and this is the area. We are, we're not responsible, we're not out of office. But we're supposed to be able to communicate and collaborate in a manner that makes it efficient and he's saying... to communicate and collaborate in a manner that makes it efficient and effective for work to be done in, in the city itself, if that's not being done. So, Mr. President, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, "Please do not send me the same thing from Santa," but this is in the case.
Okay, we had Counselor Johnson, then Counselwoman-
Thomas.
Thomas, okay, then we'll move forward. Counselor Johnson, then Counselwoman, then we'll move forward, just make sure.
I, I heard, overheard that, uh, I'm trying to mention something about a, uh, contract for Lawrence Harrison, which is good, and I agree, but I need one, I did as well, which I, I talked to some guy for paint the wall, I did a new contract. But again, I wanted to make sure, but I knew that was, uh, the wall wasn't part of the grass, because I thought we had mentioned on the last time we spoke that we're gonna have, uh, each, uh, cemetery, we're having our own, uh, grass color crew, uh, you know, uh, cause would that be just like a conflict if we have someone in a contract, uh, cutting grass and we put we get our own grass around there? But, I mean, as long as we get it done, I think the guys that are not a, uh, out there so quick, uh, but when there be a conflict, or we, uh, we, uh, we, then again, sometimes we move slow by getting paint done, so we'll move on to our own contract. But, um, but can we vote on that, to, to move forward with that? I thought we first move forward, I thought it was with the R L T.
Right, that's what I'm saying, correct. Uh, but then, but then, but the son just said something about, well, a Council person uh, wants to, another contract for, uh, this Lawrence Harrison.
What?
Attorney.
I can't come out.
What's this, this is? Oh, 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 Attorney, could you go on? Excuse me?
You, you mentioned the, about, about a contract with this Lawrence Harrison document ago, and I, I saw that here. Okay, but what I'm saying, I thought we had voted that we're gonna, we, we voted on that, but R, what is it, uh-
R L T, R L T proposal.
Right, yes, that's, that's also- Now, that's, that's a conflict that would-
Hello, Counselor.
Well, go ahead, go ahead, Attorney.
No, I just said that you will correct the votes, say.
Okay.
Okay, we have Counselwoman, uh, Thomas, then we have Counselor Randolph, and, uh, I just tried to move forward after, after, after Counselor, uh, Randolph.
Uh, I, I have a question, and I want our council to tell me, am I right? Uh, uh, Attorney Madison, back here, the last Council meeting, that we, um, I was kind of, uh, but I just wanna say that when we talking about, um, not paying one contract with no signature, and we did, and, uh, we did, and, uh, uh, vote on to pay the Black Bill, their money, and, uh, we haven't seen the contract that, uh, Attorney Madison, uh, stated that she had Henry, a planning developer. So, uh, am I, am I correct, or am I wrong? Have any Council person that this Attorney told us that, uh, we voted and agreed to pay a Black Bill benefit, a their money, thirty thousand dollars, be paid to Black Bill's benefit? And, uh, we haven't seen, it said come back with a contract, but we haven't seen the contract, uh, where it had been signed from the mayor, or from the President Bowie, or anyone, and we did, and, uh, it's plain what we did, uh, the last Council meeting, uh, President Bowie, that you put all the vote for us to-
That was another random understanding, uh, far as with that, uh, with that, with that Black Bill benefit technology. Uh, from my understanding, Wanda Maxwell, we asked Wanda Maxwell to sign that M O U, and, uh, that's as far as that, I understand, uh, I'm correct?
Y- yes, well, yes. But, but we have-
Will you speak to me this, Sergeant? Yes, sir. Uh, was, was your, uh, signatures correct? Right, and she did sign it, and I did follow, uh, follow that to, uh, I believe to you and the mayor. Okay, I have a question, okay?
Okay, so Wanda Maxwell signed it, uh, for that, but still, the body of the Council, we have not seen the contract that is planning to develop Henry's thing, and he found, and you're the Attorney, uh, we asked for us to see the copy of the contract that was supposed to be did, for that to be paid. So how you gonna do, that's a conflict of interest if you're gonna say, "Don't pay the other person, uh, the, the money that they have," and they have a contract that has not been signed, and Black Bill, they, they have not, uh, technology, they have, now, we haven't even seen a contract to pay thirty thousand dollars to.
I understand what you mean.
So, so you understand what I'm coming from? You told us that Henry Thompson has a contract where Black Bill, uh, technology, where they supposed to be needed, but he did a contract, but the contract has never came before the body of the Council. You are their Attorney, so you're telling us, you just reported to us that, uh, the other company required for them to be paid, and you found the contract that where there is no signature, and, but you never produced what Henry had to the body of the Council stating that we're supposed to pay Black Bill the thirty thousand dollars, which we voted on, and you're the Attorney there representing the city of Selma, you did not produce the contract yet to the body of the Council for us to agree for them to get the thirty thousand dollars.
I think that's why we, we, we got a deal with the M O U, uh, and the purpose that we-
That's exactly why.
I wanna be with the M O U. I mean, we can, we can send this, we can send this federal contract right back, um, I mean, we can share it back-
Okay, I'm just saying, I just, no, it's not that. I'm just saying that this body of the Council, what I'm saying is that, I understand this is federal grant money, but either way, it's still saying that this body of the Council did not see a contract. I understand you're trying to do, we, we, we need the grant money, but my thing is this here, if we gonna, uh, go stand one thing, and then we do the other thing, the process, with the process, will you tell us the process, uh, how are we supposed to do this? And then you turn around and do something else different, and then now, some of our Councils saying, "Well, okay, well, we have a contract, but no signature." But then we just did the opposite thing, where with the memo, with the M O U, we did the, we did the opposite thing with just M O U. To touch this body to this day. Uh, you're telling us that you, to do us a grant, but still, it's the process. If we gonna follow the process, we need to stay within the process, and not come back and do something else.
I don't think Attorney Madison indicated one way or the other which way we should go with this ass with contract. He's just made a malpractice, that we, we don't have a signed contract. He didn't say we should pay it, he didn't say we should pay it, he, he doesn't say anything. How did they respond to us, we don't have a signed contract?
But that's what, uh, Counselor showed, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the body of the Council doing the pro, the process that we are driven to, to go by. He did, he did his on other, on the other one. That's what I'm talking about. I'm, this is what I'm saying. He did different with the other one, and then now we have where this company is requesting for their money, uh, he produced that contract. He did produce the contract, but the contract was not even signed by the, the Council, uh, the mayor, or President Bowie. So-
Yeah, I understand, but, 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 Counselor. So how is this?
I see it, can I-
Go ahead, Counselor.
Can I see it, yeah, the-
Go ahead, go ahead, so we can, Counselor Randolph, then we'll move forward, go ahead.
But I just, what I'm saying is, is the process that we are supposed to be doing with the contract, but then we come around and we doing M O U to, uh, because we have a grant that we need to have this grant for our city, but we still, to this day, we did not see a contract. That's the only thing that I'm, me as a Council person, I'm speaking as a Council person on the, the process of what we agreed to, how we do. I just say this, I know we have a contract for ass, but it's not signed, but I'm just saying on the other, uh, process of the way that we did. That's all I'm, I'm just speaking on.
Okay, yeah, I understand what you mean. Counselor Randolph-
So the M O, the M O U needs to be signed to write for, for the contract, for the grant.
Yes. Okay, Counselor Randolph, Counselor Randolph, then we'll move forward.
But, 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 I like- The question I asked you is, you just said it.
What's this?
Uh, the M O U needs to be signed to, for the rights, for the contract, but you gotta sign the M O, the M O U needs to be signed, right, don't it?
Yes, ma'am.
So we had, my question is, we had, we had, like you just said, Miss Wanda Maxwell signed for the grant contract in order for us to get.
Well-
Am I right?
I'll put it like this. If we wanna take that M O U, we can-
No, just not-
No, 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 let me explain, let me explain. This, this grant changed, I think, around twenty sixteen, and I think we had a lot of time to, uh, spend this grant. And in between the twenty sixteen, the Council voted to let the, uh, S R A take over, take over, uh, that contract, I mean, that, uh, that grant. S R A was in possession of that grant, and then they decided to give it back to the city. In between giving it back to the city, I think we had Attorney, uh, Jones, and, uh, he's supposed to have been working on contract, if I'm not mistaken, and then Attorney Madison changed it. Uh, I don't have a problem either way, but when you're looking at the other, this, uh, grant, you have a certain amount of time to, uh, utilize that grant, and that grant is earmarked for one particular project. We could have sent it back, we, we could have sent it back.
That is not-
No, no, what I'm saying is, we could have sent it back.
That's not what I'm saying, President Bowie, that's not-
I know what you're saying, we could have sent it back for not have the grant, I mean, for not have the contract. We could have sent it back, we could have sent it back. But when you're looking at future listing, any other potential grants coming down the line, was the, the Justice, uh, they could have jeopardized any grants, you know, or since you, if we gonna send that money back, because really, we only had, I think, about five, four or five years to u- utilize that, uh, that portion of the grant. But, uh, but it's-
But see, but, but that's not what I'm saying, I'm not-
I know what you're saying.
But you had, they had this grant a long time, a long period of time. But my thing is this here, that, uh, it's, it's just like we're saying that, uh, we signed, you did this, the M O U, and had Miss Maxwell sign, but still, we still haven't seen, that means that Wayne Green did not have the contract at all. That's what we, it means that Wayne Green did not have a contract at all, but we, the grant trade is in the place of the whole thing, that's why you, we did the M O U, but I'm just saying, my thing is this here, uh, I'm only talking about the process of the same thing that we, we asked the body of the Council is talking about. So that's why I had to speak, because it was kind of bothering me, I was, I had a little conflict here.
That's right.
It was, I, I wanted to speak on my behalf, uh, you know, the way you were did, treat, treat all of us the same way. You know what I'm saying?
I tell you what, I tell you what.
Not one step, and not the other.
Okay, I tell you what.
That's what I'm saying.
Let, let, let's have an ad hoc committee, you be part of the committee, I be part of the committee, and we're, Counselor Bowie, to look at the ad hoc contract with, with Attorney Madison, contract with the-
And I can't, I can't speak as, you know, we-
I'm saying, I'm gonna say.
I have the right to speak as-
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, because when we do things, we have to look at everything, and then when we look at our Attorney, how he moved things and agreed to move things that way, so I just want him to be, I want to treat them, treat all of us the same way.
I do agree with you, unless, unless out of there, I'll talk to committee, I sit up you and Counselor Bowie, and look at what, uh, Attorney Madison, and come back with a recommendation, how's that? That was good to me, brother.
I feel bad, I, I gotta let you know, because I feel like, see it's this, see it's this, uh, you know, we are, we are, we are the legislative body of the Council, and my, it, it just bother me. I just, it's always, and I just, when something bother me, I see a conflict, I, I have to speak on this, how I see how it was done. So that's just me, as, as, as the Council person sitting up there, tired of it, that it should have been supposed to, uh, he is our Attorney, he, he represent the city of Selma, and this is how I feel, and that's how I'm gonna say it, you know, that's my word.
Yes, ma'am, can this get work, we're starting out, we're in ad hoc committee. Uh, Counselor Randolph?
And then Counselor Jackson.
Okay. And then Counselor, Counselor Randolph?
Yeah, uh, President Bowie, uh-
Go ahead, sir.
That was, uh, when there was something like the contract, that's, that's, I did a contract, first of all, contracts, you, uh, to get, uh, continue to get Lawrence Harrison, uh, uh, cemetery cut, because I know that, uh, the mayor and, uh, Attorney gonna put the, the, the on up, because they not shook, they had shown us that they were willing to, willing to sign a contract, just like he, he holding up, uh, Counselwoman Jackson, and so he gonna take, he gonna take at least two to three weeks for them to pass somebody and cut that grass. Meanwhile, the grass is still growing out there, and so I was trying to, uh, get the grass cut while we wait on the contract to be signed, or whatever, go through that process, 'cause that gonna be another three weeks at the most. And, uh, you know, and I asked the members, and, and the, and the guys out there, uh, what is his name, Mr. Spitz, was out there, they out there doing a good job, and I say, you know, let me give y'all something, so y'all can continue to cut until we pass somebody.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Randolph. Counselwoman Jackson?
Well, I'm, I'm thankful that, uh, that Thomas brought this up, because I was sitting off and, and trying to do some other things, and didn't hear, uh, the ass of this problem. Uh, I'm a bit disappointed with the person that's standing, so I'm, I'm a part of the ass to choose the floor that I was gonna part of this ad hoc disease, but I know you must know it's really, really busy right now, and so you just wanna help me out, the reason you that this is part of, but I, I, um, related that he came to the floor with this, because process has this, uh, part, and it has favorite one group over another, the same factors that you identified with the, um, green contract, of same factors that were in place. The only thing that's different is we have a signed contract by them that was sent to all Council members and attorneys. Now, where the ball dropped, because we have it on video, so I can look at, um, where we actually was looking at the contract, Mr., uh, Ms. Shore was contesting the contract, asking the Attorney, uh, Jim Nixon taking out the contract, he said no, that that was in a fair contract. We voted to go forward, we voted to put funding in our budget to cover this, it's on the record, and the, uh, Attorney didn't, not somebody with the recommendation, nor did our Attorney say, "Well, this doing M O U, well, let's sign it," and David said it was supposed to be signed before this, or, uh, wasn't signed, and the ass of this day, this party, we, we have that on record, we have that myself, you can go and look, it's on YouTube. I, I look back at it, I don't know if our Attorney is taking the opportunity to look at our records, look at our minutes, look at those videos that I'm quite sure they're gonna produce when we get through, and we're gonna have to pay assurances and all those other things on top, of what we have to pay, and then they may bring up the, very well, bring up some of the paper, and this communication where we showed another group, at the same time we were looking at this, we had another group that did not have a contract, so that , and, and that was for more than their contract. And we decided to move forward, and we decided not to move forward, we did not, we never produced a contract, the contract did never produce a contract. In this instance, the contract was produced, we have record where we voted on it, I don't know if we had to vote, we voted on, uh, allow S R A to have the, uh, grant, move forward to grant, I don't know if we ever voted to allow Mr. Green to enter into a contract, I don't recall that, so we got the ass of the voter record, we got the- So we got the ASMR vote on record, we got the email that it was sent to all the councilmen, we have, and, we have all, we have the workbench in possession, not only on record, but on sale. And so we need to do something to remedy this, because what it looks like is pretty vile. And the vibe is, for one other group, we've made, uh, success, we put MOUs in place, and for this group, with less money, and with all the, the track records that they have, and the information that we have on record, because then we said, no. I mean, I, I just, I'm glad, but the process is flawed, and I'm thankful that you brought up the process, because it is flawed, it is vile, it is, it's not just, it's not fair, it's not equitable, and it's not fair.
All right, I'll spread that.
I, I, I think that's what you're saying.
All right, thanks, Counselor Morgan, uh, Jackson. Delayed, but not denied. All right, this is, Counselor Michelle, then we gonna move back, you can move forward, Charlie.
Mr. Roe, I would recommend, it looks like Mr. Howard, the attorney for Emmett, said there's been special losses for a contract that the city itself has not been assigned for. Uh, I would, uh, hope and pray that the ASMR committee would get legal, uh, advisement from Emmett. And I think Mr. Howard will be the ideal person that would be able to sign out, decide to me what this, uh, contract is about, and how it sold. I still say, we got nothing from it, and the fact that there's no signed contract, we need to just move on. So that would be my recommendation.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Attorney, May Fire.
Uh, first of all, I, I would point out that your, uh, and I think it's, it's a good idea, and I'd be glad to participate. Uh, I also wanted to point out that with both Black Girl Technology and ASMR, um, I've been in touch with all the parties concerned, and, uh, have looked to find a positive and amicable way to resolve, uh, both situations. That's why I'm still in discussions with Attorney, uh, Brian Taylor, I'm still in discussions with Black Girl Technology, I'm still in discussions, in discussions with the council, uh, the mayor, and, and everybody else I can think of to hopefully break this deal positive resolution in both cases, without, without the need for legal action. Uh, that's, that's all I wanted to say about that, and I'm gonna end my report with that.
And also, to Attorney, in other contract, I want the ASMR committee to go back and look at, and other contract that we may have overlooked, and try to pull from resolution.
Go ahead, I, I. Right, I've said, I've said before, that I have a list of some ten entities, I think, two or three of which already have had contracts renewed and drafted, even though I may, uh, 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 other counsel, legal counsel, uh, for the city, but we got a list of, of some seven or eight other entities that all need to have their contracts renewed. I'm standing ready, we're unable to assist those, and I've already started, uh, talking with you about one or two of them. Uh, this, this is a way to be proactive, with the list that I received from, uh, from the finance office about contracts that, that we probably still do need. But that's, that's the, that's the end of my report, Mr. President.
I'm not aware of this.
Okay, Attorney?
All right, I, I, I think I could, I thought I had forwarded, I could forward it to the council, uh, but I, but I got it from the finance office.
What was that you forward? What was that you forwarded, Attorney?
No, I said, I thought I had already forwarded the list of potentially needed contracts for, uh, at least ten entities, two of which we have already drafted, and, 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 and areas to choose it, and, uh, I thought I had already forwarded that, and I was glad to forward it, uh.
Uh, uh, Attorney Madison, can you forward it to me, to City Treasurer? It came from my office, I would like to read it.
Sure, I, I forward it. I'm sorry, did you forward it where?
To, to City Treasurer, I would like to look at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, sure, I'm glad to.
Mr. President?
Counselor Morgan.
Uh, uh, you forwarded that to the City Treasurer, did you not just say you got it from her office? Do you have it from her office, she's not aware of?
Excuse me?
I thought you said you got it from the finance department.
I did.
The finance director is saying forwarded to her, because she's not aware of it.
Well, I didn't understand that, I don't, I don't know what she's aware of or not aware of, I just asked, but I forgot it.
And what contract is that now?
I don't get this.
It's a list, it's a list, it's a list of entities in which the city has been regularly contracted.
Okay, excuse me, you're talking about like OD open contracts like that?
Right, like the, uh, the course, fortune, search, drug transport, all those entities that the city was regularly contracted. There's a list.
Okay.
Okay.
I know that, that usually just comes from the, uh, I think that, heard it, I think Jim and I just bring it before, of contracts like that, that's an agency contract, you're saying.
I, I would like to see that, excuse me, all of y'all, excuse me, all of you all, please. Y'all, y'all going around, my, I hate myself in these circles like this, I was simply asking, did you get this from the finance department? You said yes, the finance director was brought confusion, uh, to me, because she said, forward this to me, I've never seen it. He's the director of that department, which is why I was asking you, uh, you were forwarding something to her from her department that you was not aware of. Y'all start talking about all this other stuff. And so I'm asking you, Mr. Attorney, how did you get it, if it, if it's the, the finance director, it's her department, she, she's not aware of something coming out of her department?
How did I get it? I was in discussions with, uh, individ- an individual, or some individuals in the office, about contracts. They had copies of contracts, I was asked to draft contracts. And I was asking if there were contracts already in existence, and the answer was, we have some, but not all contracts. And then, and somehow the discussion evolved to the point where a list of entities with which the city was regularly contracted was pointed out to me, and I asked if I could get a copy of it.
Oh.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, so, Madam Treasurer, this, so this document came from your office, and you are not aware of it at all?
No, and obviously, um, you're major master, and I'll see you, you should read it, I guess, uh, if we, we have a breakdown in communication somewhere, because I, I would like to know what's coming out, because I can speak and tell you, um, and elaborate, elaborate further, so, um, but, um.
Yes, that's, and can make departments hear this, departments hear, and I would, I would just like to be aware of any requests that you're making from my office.
I know the city came with departments all the time, this way, you don't always call the department ahead, because I don't always have the need to tell the department ahead.
Well, that's the issue.
Okay, yeah, in a city, Attorney, uh, give with this way, because it's, you know, it's not involved, financial and stuff like that, she needs to be a, a process, it wasn't hard on.
And it.
Not a business.
No, but also. Mr. President, you have signed a contract, Mr. President, Mr. President, you have signed a contract, and so we need to know as well, and, and, and one of the, one people direction that we give is from the finance department. The other people is the finance, uh, department, so we need to know, because we have signed a contract.
Yes, ma'am, I do consider it, but if you would, make sure you forward it to her tomorrow, uh, I already did, like, um, do the thing. Okay, nice to see you. All right, you want, are there any other, any other reports going? Thank you, sir. All right, okay.
The business items, uh, let's, let's, let's start there. Let's go here. I would like to add an item to the business items, it has something to do with the care payment that was made to the police department and the fire department, I, I, I mean, I just have something, I just want this council to consider.
I'll just chime in, okay, all right, careers report. All right. Careers report, Counselor Michelle, okay. Uh, Counselor Miranda, increased space for elections, twenty twenty poll workers.
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, uh, yeah, we tried to take a look at, could we use some of that, uh, the COVID nineteen money that we can't, couldn't use yet. But, uh, we hit with, with this way, and we go through that money, uh, to pay this, uh, spur poll worker, uh, because it is dangerous out here with all this COVID nineteen, and, uh, right now they're getting a hundred dollars, and I would like to increase that, uh, to a hundred dollars for the poll workers. Uh, is Wade here on the phone now?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, uh, is there any way you could find, where we can, um, get some funds for that, uh, to increase that, uh, two hundred dollars, uh?
Yeah, I, I did, um, prior conversation, I did research, and I looked on, and I, you know, government, we can't, uh, move from, um, cost saving line item to that amount, um, and I will, um, have a specific amount, uh, from the clerk on tomorrow. I'll try to get that specific amount from the clerk, with that additional cost looking.
Okay, and that's what you're getting, Mr. Ray, could you e-mail it to the council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else, Counselor Miranda?
That's it?
Thank you, sir. Uh, next we have, uh, Counselor Morgan Benjamin, care act drawdown update, budgetary, election day preparation, COVID nineteen report.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, just bring you all up to speed, the last time we spoke concerning, uh, the drawdown process, I told you all that, um, we are following the process that we voted on, and I also told you all that our administrative assistant and our, uh, finance director met with our state senator concerning drawdown. Since that time, she's also corresponded, uh, with the state of Alabama, so she remains the finance director, Ms. Wade. Um, there are two things that we asked Ms. Wade to, uh, get, uh, further clarification on, okay? Uh, the one thing Counselor Miranda already mentioned it, and you all may, may not be copied on that, I think you might be, because I requested that you do. Uh, so he has found out, his answer to that was that it was, it would not be covered. That brings us to question number two, uh, Ms. Wade to, uh, Mr. Brent, what is Brent's last name, is Wade? I'm looking in the eyes, okay, maybe she can hear me, but, uh, um, her email, she can, uh. Okay, thank you. The second question was, uh, concerning hazard pay for employees in cemetery, recreation, and public works department. She, she wrote to have big clarification on that, because it was not on the list, okay? Okay, so we are going now to give this, this file, and I'll read it, I should read for the record tomorrow, actually. Ms. Wade, the only salaries that are reimbursable for this portion of the care act funding are generally the payrolls of, uh, police officers, sheriff, deputy sheriff, investigators, firefighters, and EMT. DPF N L and F M L A twelve are reimbursable for all employees. Other salaries will not be reimbursable, if you have any further questions, please let us know. So Ms. Wade went on to ask him for further clarification, uh, concerning police and fire. Those members in the police and fire who are not under those names that he named. She went further, and she asked him, and he said, Ms. Wade, it has been determined that only person with longer salaries will be reimbursable. Now, on the line item, you will see that it covers public safety, and it was not specified. So they went on to meet the, the task force, went on to meet to provide us a further specification on what they meant by public safety. And so now you will see that this being updated, I guess this week, that this being updated with the classification, but you heard it here first, because, uh, she got it first before it's being updated. That email, when I received it, I asked, uh, Ms. Wade to send it to all of you for your reading pleasure. And so I hope that you have that email, um, Ms. Wade, you sent it correct, correct. Okay, so if you have that, and can, and can, you know, you can read the thread, it's a long thread, um, it had something they would say, something, they would ask for the classification. So, uh, you all can read that thread on that. What's the next item, Mr. President?
And, Mr. President, before she goes to that, now let me just, uh, steal some comments on the rare issue.
Okay.
Mr. President, do you have a phone?
It may not be, oh, go ahead, Counselor, give my hand.
Okay.
No matter what.
Okay. I, I, I truly understand who is eligible and who is not. However, Ms. Wade, you have written me some law, there were numbers, there was numbers in the police department and side department that are not special response, uh, category add, and support personnel to the United States and others. They do receive the eighteen hundred dollars, am I correct?
That's correct.
So, Mr. President, I think it would be wise, and it would be fair to give all our employees that eighteen hundred dollars to cover the COVID nineteen, uh, share, share, even though we're not gonna get reimbursed. But because some people got it, Mr. President, we gotta be fair, we have to find another fair. So I'm, I would be prepared for tomorrow night, that all city employees, including the municipal court, be included, are receiving eighteen hundred dollars.
Counselor, Mr. Sure, let me ask you a clarification, when you say all city employees, all, you mean all, so you're saying.
I. Absolutely, if, if you recall, see, the hall was closed for several weeks, however, there was still business being done. Some people was coming and going in and out of the hall, the manager, uh, I mean, the, the, the municipal court was still engaged, and they, house, they housing the police department. So I just want to be fair with our employees, it's just not right for someone to get it, even though it should have been, uh, made as a matter of fact, who's eligible and who's not before we were asking it to spend. But it was to spend, never to spend, and I'm not criticizing nobody for that, I'm gonna make myself clear. My position is that we should allow the people that are not entitled to it, let's make sure all of our employees and city government receives the same benefit.
So, Counselor Morgan, you heard, uh, what the motion will be on tomorrow, so it's not just cemetery, recreation, and public work as it were. Previously, uh, Counselor Morgan, sure is telling you, uh, he is going to make the motion for, okay?
And, and simply because there were recreation, and, and saying, and recreation and cemetery department was excluded from the, uh, rule of regulations, which is okay, I got no problem with that, what I do have a problem with is that those support personnel within those two departments receive it, even though it's not their fault that they got it, there's nobody's fault, to be honest with you. The fact is, they got it, we need to deliver the pass to you, and be right, and do right by our own authority.
Okay, Counselor Michelle, my government is backing up, what was your, uh, uh, administrative thing? You, you say.
I've re- reiterated, uh, I've been reiterated, it's.
I can, I can reiterate myself, Counselor Morgan, I can reiterate myself, let me, let me tell the president what I said. I said to say. Pardon me?
No.
Okay, I said to say, Mr. President, say, support personnel within the side department and the police department is given eighteen hundred dollars, and I'm not following nobody for this mix-up, but after the money was dispensed, then the ruling came down that only the special response, which means all of those who wear a badge and a gun, and who has arrest powers, shares another, and, 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 and some other category is only eligible for that money. And because support personnel within the police department and the side department, uh, they're seated and receive eighteen hundred dollars, we need to be fair with all of our employees, even though we tried to include the recreation department, the cemetery, and they were ruled out because of those who are eligible by the care act, uh, the care package. The fact being, some people got the money, they're not entitled to it, and as far as that all, I'm not accusing, I'm not blaming anybody for this. And that's not fact, there's no fault to it, but the fact still remains, there were people who received eighteen hundred dollars that weren't eligible for it, and I just want to be fair to all the city employees, including the, uh, uh, municipal court, and give those people eighteen hundred dollars that those people who received it wasn't eligible for. And I will be putting that on the floor tomorrow for a motion.
But where would the buck be coming from?
Jefferson. Okay, alright.
Ms. Wade. Ms. Wade, this is.
Uh.
Yes, I'm here. Okay, could you bring us a figure and tell us what that what that number is?
Yes, ma'am. I will come tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I heard they said Jack, uh like Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes, um I will say that I actually heard with uh Councilwoman Short that it's one to say across the board. Um I feel like that there uh was a problem that we should have uh been clarified with before the funding went out. Um and I think that is what uh the councilwoman put in a bias into on the last at the last vote. Uh at this point, we keep in thought, we have to give all, we're gonna, we're gonna have to determine uh what the supply for our budget is going forward. Because just because we have extra funding today, that means we have extra funding uh three months from now. As you know, this thing is lasting longer and longer, and it has a harder and harder hit on our economy and everyone, uh the health and welfare of our citizens and all. So I'm asking that, I concur that we we're gonna have to do an assessment to see what we can provide. And also, I want to say, if we're looking at giving the uh poll workers uh officials three hundred dollars, uh that we have to. I would want to say that anyway after that, I mean, that we have to look at giving our employees a company because some of them don't make three hundred dollars every week. And uh if we're gonna look at COVID, so then we have to look at it uh for our employees. And we thank the citizens that come out and do this, but we're gonna have to be fair for our employees. So uh Councilwoman, put in, thank you, because I was gonna ask for the uh savers to bring us some type of type A and something that we can look at. I don't know if we can move forward with it tomorrow. Uh maybe it needs to be at the next council meeting, but I agree that we need to move forward with it because I agree that we need, we should be looking. How much is gonna cost? What impact will it have on us long term? And how can we give it to them? And I I don't, I don't think it's something that has to be done tomorrow, but it's something that is absolutely to benefit.
Thank you for that. I do concur with you. Uh, Mr. President, Councilwoman Benjamin, Budget Hearing, and.
Okay, I want to pull something out of the COVID report and just insert it right here because it makes more sense. It makes more sense that I put it under here. So um I was anticipating uh uh either Councilwoman Johnson or Councilwoman Short uh bringing uh to be paid for uh cemetery uh you know, the three, cemetery, public work, and uh the other department, I can't keep up with now, the other department, what next? The other department. And our suggestion under the COVID report was going to, was was going to be given with the council's pleasure. Uh we, you know, we're talking about general funds, but we also set aside, we set aside the the disaster money, for lack of, for lack of a good name. I would say disaster money for this particular reason, for the target, for this pandemic, for this economic disaster. And if we're, if we're, if it's general fund versus the money we set aside actually for this, then my recommendation is to say, take into consideration that it should come from what we set aside for the pandemic. It just will not be reimbursable. And this is just for consideration of the council instead of hitting the general plan. That's that's for consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Alright.
Okay.
Budget Hearing.
Okay. Okay, so um this is all that y'all, and I had this on, I had this on that dinner for quite some time, and I'm just gonna say it again. When are we meeting?
I talked to Mrs. Wade on the internet uh about what's in at the budget hearing on today. I will get with her tomorrow. And uh we'll have closely uh budget hearings, uh upcoming budget hearings uh by Wednesday or Thursday. Email it to Dave Shaw.
When is the Thursday? Next week?
This week.
Okay, so y'all let me know, like, if you can, please. Let let us all know this time, because we all have our calendars and schedules, so we need to know these things beforehand.
You can just see I just saw the calendar today. Here's what we have to do today, and then, you know, uh if there's a problem, we can just go ahead and modify. But just to finish the date, uh we get together and uh email it up.
Yeah, I know we, I think we all can make it as long as we know it's happening. We just don't have a date yet, so just.
You have the date.
What's the next one, Mr. President?
Election Day prepara.
Okay, so I'm getting weary about this election day day and the preparation. So I had, I had, the reason I was probably the last one sending in my polling officials is because the people are weary of coming, of coming out serving the public. And so I had to sit around some people. I had to replace some people. I did have a person that that passed away. There was one of my official staff, like yourself. There were one of my uh officials. But, you know, I I knew uh some of the elderly at both of my sites. Uh and um because I I like to give them a day out of work and so that they can get paid for serving the community because they volunteer so much. So I use them on on election day. And 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 of course, it's not good for them to be coming out now. And so it took me a while to do my list because people are weary about serving the public. And so my 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 interpretation of election day is that we will have everything we need, everything in place. And and I wanted to know what that day looks like. Do we have partitions between people? Do we have enough sanitizers and gloves? Do we have disinfectant spray and some model of boot? Uh you know, do we have enough for every election site where we're protecting people and nobody comes out and spreads the coronavirus to anyone? Because we have a process in place by which a person uses a boot, they cast their vote. The boot is then disinfected by one of the workers after each and every voter. I I want to know what that process looks like, and I think we should all know, want to know what that process looks like. It's gonna be very rare and funny. Do we have enough TPG for that day? Uh have we bought enough TPG for that? I will shoot. I'm at the first point, and I don't, I, it's so stupid to me, so I can't present it to you all tonight. I I sent her an email and asked her to compare what she had and what she already to what she sent me. So I can't present it to you tonight because I'm not comfortable with presenting it to you tonight because it's it's confusing. Uh because of what is already presented to us, what I loaded already presented to us, and we can't play around with this. But we do need what we need for election day. There's this whole election process of people coming in and out with absentee ballots in. Do we have enough stuff to spray down? Are we cleaning after every absentee ballot voter that uses the podium? They use the table, we're thinking it's out of order to have people in the hall voting where employees can pass by and see them voting. I just think it's a disgrace in a policy. But do we have enough of everything that we need? Are we treating this COVID-19 seriously enough? Do we are prepared to this entire election process? The process meaning from July seventh all the way to the runoff.
Okay. Well, Ms. Harris will be on the line tomorrow. Uh we can ask about, give us an update on her report.
Okay, please.
Speaking of elections, Mr. President, the Secretary of State has reported that they will be intervening in Sanborn. And a lot of us consider Maryland and it was a fair city because of reported fraud. And I will be the first to tell you, if there is fraud that is, there is fraud that is going on, all as we speak. You got people running for office, we don't even live in the city. And so I I mean, I'm just looking forward for the Secretary of State to make sure that we have an honest election, which at this point, I don't think we are on the track to keep that down.
So if it's the Secretary of State, I did invite uh the Secretary of State uh to my uh political forum. And you all know that he did attend, and he also gave his cell phone number for all of us. Uh I think I wrote it down, but it's recorded, and David Blackman also videoed it the whole entire day. And so that number, that phone number is on there. I I would take all of you all to uh save uh Ms. Morell's number in your phone for election day and before election day to save Ms. Morell's number. She gave it to us, to you, uh the baby that I invited her. Um and so they just gone, and uh so we uh the Democratic Executive Secretary, because they saw that they invited all three of them. They all three attended. They gave a very good voter education session. So please uh get that number, uh save it in your phone, and give it to your person, and give it to your one person.
But could you give, could you send the number to me, Councilwoman Benjamin?
I I think I'm gonna go back to the recording. I figured to write it down. I'm, I think I'm gonna send it to everybody just because I put that recording that David put up. Pull it out of there if I can write it down in my notes and then I'll just send it to everybody.
Alright, thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Last, uh, nineteen reports, I thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. President. Council, uh Councilman, I'm sorry, under the. Uh Councilwoman Randolph, and I think Councilwoman Benjamin as well, asked if I was making inquiry into the pay uh election officials working the polls. Uh and after I did that, after I checked, I think it's germane to uh discussion that you just had and and my property, what you might want to do tomorrow, I I would consider that a right general. Uh the information I compiled was both out of the statute and after talking with uh Laurie Lyon at uh legal municipalities. She uh pointed out that the statute uh as far as pay to polling place workers only mentions a minimum, I think it's eight dollars an hour that you cannot pay below. So there is really no ceiling and the whatever the council is predisposed to pay, I think Councilwoman Randolph said something about two or three hundred dollars uh or 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 more money than the one hundred dollars. And uh I think the council is free to make that call uh in terms of paying officials, boards, and and uh they can do it within the statutory framework.
Alright, thank you, Tony. You're right. Next, uh, you have a last report, COVID-19 report, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yeah, it related with the attorney said, I think we should consider uh putting that on the uh uh that is, it's been set that way for long, I think. Uh uh legislative body after legislative body after legislative body down through the decades. Just got kind of comfortable with that amount of money. Things have changed, and we're in the middle of a pandemic. So I think a lot has changed since whoever said it some years and years and years and decades ago. So I think we got comfortable with that, and 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 so thank you, uh, Mr. Tony, for looking into that and giving the clarification that there is a minimum, but there is no ceiling. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, the COVID-19.
Can you run the stream, word?
The COVID-19 report, I'll give a full report on tomorrow. As you all know, we will be tomorrow at 12 noon. And you all, you all know, everybody from the governor's office, to Congress, to any of the health care professionals, professionals, to everybody in between uh on those town halls. So you all are still welcome. Always invited to come. Please attend if you'd like. I will give a report on tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Uh next, Councilwoman Thomas, grass cutting award seven, committee camera award seven, and Police Department mold repower on second and third floor. Councilwoman Thomas.
Okay, uh, the reason why I have the grass cut in that room because I deal with uh a lot of, I have a lot of uh fake property in my ward. Uh a lot of uh vacant lots of, some of them belong to the city and a lot of them belong to uh state. Uh Saturday, uh possibly, I like, I was whipping and running back, all kinds of stuff was going on in Ward seven. Trees falling, uh dry rock trees falling down in the middle of the street. I had called a police officer uh to get somebody to come out and get trees out of the street. I have like three, three trees in my area. They are very dry rot. Uh also with the grass cut and uh and uh these are very, you can't cut these lots with uh with uh zero turns. You have to have a tractor. These lots have been grow, over a way of grown, and the kids were one section on uh Griffin, on Dead End where family live. A section, it's a state lot. Uh we had a couple of snakes came out. The kids was out there playing, you know, with the high grass. And it turned out they're playing, and there was a couple of snakes came out. They go around to the family house. And um, uh I mean, it was a big commotion, so you know, like uh as a county person for Ward seven, I had to do what I had to do on on short Griffin. And also on Bogal, like railroad track, it's hot. There are so many snakes coming out. Uh they're coming out and they're going into uh where we have these abandoned houses and someone lived next door where he not couldn't grab the proper owner of the state that owns it, because it just grew up so bad and it ended up into people home. Uh I had to answer that with the tree on uh tree, on tree mile. Uh the young lady disposed, she fell. No, I have no one was coming out of the tree at the time. Uh half of that tree is dry rot. It fell in the middle of the street and lucky no one was coming to tree mile. My next thing is, I already talked about the camera. Um he explained to, uh when he met with the gentleman, he told me what we need to do. My next thing is that.
Oh, two councils in the comments. Council, that was a good idea about moving forward with them cameras. Uh that would also help curb some of their.
Well, the reason why I was had to do was be uh because on tree mile, where Charlie Sanders uh got murdered at, the brother, it was an incident, it happened two weeks ago, uh you know, I'm glad he did get shot. You know, someone had a shooting, and it flew straight through the house when he he made it to the back. So, you know, uh all kinds of things go on that night. People sleep, you know, people have feet. So that was my main concern, because I did not want another dead body. I did not want anyone else. I don't want nobody else to get killed over there. We had too many people gunned down on the street that night while we up in our.
Yeah, I want to thank you for the chat in calls.
Yeah, I have, because teachers have been on me uh about this, and I tell them, I talk about this every council meeting. I've been talking about this. Uh my next thing is uh with the police department, our community, I, um, you know, they have been talking about the molding on second and third floor. I let Chief uh uh Police Chief Booker on the line, so we can explain to you uh what's going on uh with the, up there on the second and third floor. And my recommendation is to my community, Michael Johnson and uh Councilwoman Benjamin, that we let Chief come back with us uh uh a proposal of of what it's gonna take to get this molding out, because you know molding is not good. Uh but any human body that's surrounded, you know, doing that every day on the, we got it in the city hall. City police probably need to try to get that from us. So I let Chief, uh Chief Booker explain about that. Chief Booker, you on?
Yes, ma'am, I am. Yes, um, uh make this person, this girl, the mold near the jail on the second floor and in the uh maintenance closet, also in on the third floor, in the restrooms. She brought that to my attention. That's when I called Councilwoman Thomas, while we were on the uh call. Mister Tyler from Serfo invited, he called me and said that he will be back tomorrow around one o'clock to take a look at it for us. And I can have a vote for you.
Okay.
Alright, and uh my next, uh I had uh the public safety, we were dealing with these, this uh trees. And uh with uh uh we don't need any more lawsuit in our city. We don't need this, and it's our duty as in our history, if we got uh dry rock trees that are falling down, they are constantly, they're just falling. They just falling, and uh uh I just want to do what's best for my community. I'll, my community come first. I want to make sure that no one get hurt walking down the street. Uh this, I see these trees uh fall quite often, and uh I had uh uh this contract, oh ten lots, I had them to come out and look. The tree is is about as old as the. The tree is, is about as old as the community, uh, I've been in this community over almost five decades, and I'm quite sure this tree been there longer than that. And it just, it just fall, it's located on Mena, it's a huge, but it's dry rot. And it just fall, because university people have to come through. My neighborhood, and Trump come through, the neighborhood going into university. And, uh, I had them to look at, and I wanted to find out, uh, and a couple of, located in the area, um, Hudson and Mena, we need to get, uh, some of those, uh, lambs to being trimmed. And I went to Miss Wade, I always go to Miss Wade to find out, uh, if there's any funding that I can, uh, move forward with this issue. I talked a little about, which we still have tree cut, uh, account, where we have like, uh, twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars in there. And, uh, for my, uh, to remove the tree and do trimming on Hudson and, uh, Mena. And I was gonna look at tree mile and over on Kingsley, where city, uh, city right away behind Mr. Charles White home, where the, the, it had to grow all on his, uh, his shed, we have two people there, uh, one on Kingsley and one on Law, where city property, uh, city eastway, this is city tree, it's, it's a two over, which we have been able to get, I put work on it then, and, uh, I haven't had anyone to come out of my work on it, been in for quite some time. And I would like to have, uh, this done in my ward. But I did do the contract yet, so I talked to, uh, the, the body of the council, because, uh, I don't want, uh, anyone else getting hurt, or someone trying to shoot the city. And I want to take care of this matter before something else may happen.
Okay. Thanks, Councilwoman Thomas. Uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, I see you on the air.
Oh, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm getting the COVID report tomorrow, but let me go there and, 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 uh, for tonight. Uh, the police department and the fire department need for, because you all can think about it, and I sent it to, Mr. President, you just now, and, uh, our administrative assistant, so that y'all can be looking at that and can spend it onward. Uh, but there's a sprayer that, uh, the chief has gotten information from Judge Nahn that there's a sprayer available to sanitize, that you just call it backpack sprayer. And so the chief is, uh, requesting to, on top of the police department, and for City Hall, where he also sits on one over every day, uh, at City Hall. And then we further started discussing that the fire department probably needs the same. And so, uh, the chief is saying that he needs two, and the fire department would, would need three, because they have three buildings. But I also, uh, was thinking, and, and, and we don't have a vote for us, on Election Day, uh, when the buses start coming in, City Hall, uh, the council chamber, it's a tight quarter, only tight quarters, I would say. And the team, best to me, that we use the convention center, and therefore use four, four to end the building, either one. And spread way, way out, so the buses that are being delivered by the officials can come through those back doors. Citizens not use those back doors, uh, and, uh, the election, uh, people are, as, as, whatever the name of them are, the professionals that come down, uh, with the machines, and they do the counting, put them on the stage, and spread everybody else who needs to be spread out, out in the convention center or the end of building. Council chamber is just too small. And I think we need to also, uh, bomb, if we're gonna use convention center or the end of building, we also need to bomb, even though we know that after fourteen days, there's probably not a virus in there. But it definitely will have to be bombed after people leave, excuse me. So I was thinking, when Chief said he was ordering the backpack sprayer, uh, I'm calling the farmers, but they really are sprayers, which sprayer for the police department and the fire department, uh, which, and they're ordering through City Hall, I was thinking we also need to order for whatever building where the election buses are going to come in. And so council, we need to also order for ourselves. They are four ninety-nine each, the chief is requesting an order for two for the department, and three for the fire department, and I think it would make sense, council, that we make an order and they will.
Okay. I'm forward to everybody to email the checks you sent me.
Uh-huh, yeah, it, it, it's like a little description on there, a description.
I, I'm forward to, to, to go.
Yeah, I was going to wait till tomorrow and hope that, uh, Chief would have, uh, the description on the chemicals, but he doesn't have description on the chemicals, uh, and the numbers on the chemicals, but Chief, do you, if you're still here, do you think you'll have the information on the chemicals tomorrow?
Hello, Chief. Hello, Chief.
Oh, he's muted.
Go ahead, Chief. Okay, yes, ma'am, I should have that information for you tomorrow. Uh, like I said, we're gonna order it from Santa, it's already, uh, three picks. All you have to do is just, uh, put in those folders, and you can, uh, use it from there. That's what we have to do ourselves.
Okay, tell the council how it worked, because I, I know, I, I sound like I was grounded to my own self, so I know that probably sound like this, but would you tell them how it worked?
Sure, uh, when we got Surf Row to come and fog the police department, they used a similar machine, uh, it's a backpack machine. They, uh, they put the chemicals inside the backpack, and they fog every floor for us. So I was on a, uh, a little meeting with Judge Wiggins, and because he talked, uh, with all the police departments and, uh, sheriff in his, uh, district. And, uh, he brought that to our attention, that Hail County Sheriff is using this, and they also, just in terms of bragging, uh, chemical for the backpack folders. And, uh, that would save a lot on the city and the county if we did that out there versus hiring someone every two or three months to come in and fog our business floor.
Uh, any questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman Benjamin?
Okay, so I, I want to know, uh, should I also submit for the council taking care of the city buildings, of whatever building that's gonna be used for elections, should I submit?
Yes, ma'am.
Why? To backpack, with pleasure.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll be with, uh, the, uh, our administrative assistant, so she can be on the P, PO, and so that everybody could have, uh, a visual for that, for tomorrow's meeting. Okay. I have, I'll, I'll, what is that?
Anything else, Councilwoman?
I thought you had a question.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah, I, I wanted to, 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 uh, give, uh, uh, a question to the, uh, uh, to the chief, to the police chief?
Chief, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Thomas.
Uh, I want to thank, uh, you for, you know, we're some of part of the Public Safety Committee, and President Bowie is their, uh, their, uh, chairperson. Uh, I noticed that, uh, we have two new officer, uh, in our city, and, uh, I just want to thank you for, uh, whatever you do, I hope we get some more. Uh, we need more police officers to patrol our areas, like, in our wards. And, uh, I noticed that we have two new, one, I, I've seen them, and, uh, I just want to thank, you know, you for trying to get more police officers, and I see it itself.
Okay, Chief, I didn't know we had two new, can you report the council tomorrow, if the news?
What we're doing, uh, they are in the process, we are, we are wrapping up going, we actually have four, that's already April certified, that won't have to go to the council, there's two of them that will, and what I will do, I will have them on the call tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Great job, Chief.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, finally, um, so we have cameras in the, we have cameras in the area where, uh, voters are voting, and where voters are supposed to be voting, so our designated area is always been in the first office, behind the partition, away from everyone else, and in private. Uh, we spoke about the camera already in the first office, removed or covered. Uh, so, this, I, I, I haven't, I, I don't even remember why I was at City Hall that day. I happened at City Hall, and you had voters in the hall voting, where there are also cameras shooting in every direction. We know that, they're shooting in every direction. And voters are also in the hall voting, uh, which means cameras could pass by them, anyone could pass by them, anyone going to the restroom could pass by them voting. And so this is a problem, and I, and I know this just can't be a problem I'm thinking of. I know someone has to be thinking, this, this is a privacy problem right here. We have a problem, we have a voting privacy problem now.
Hello?
Good health, I'm, I'm here, I just put it out there, if it's not a privacy problem, it's a problem. If I just, I'll be in my head.
Yeah, there's a problem.
So what's the resolution, council? What's the resolution? This is a privacy problem, what's the resolution, that's a problem.
Are, are there already law, uh, 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 things in place when, uh, people come to vote, uh, in the, in the city hall? When they doing the absentee, don't they already have, uh, uh, required being, that already in place? Because you should have been going by?
What's that petition? I mean. Okay. Go ahead, Council.
Yeah, they have to, yeah, they have to have petitions in privacy, y'all know, cameras cannot shoot down on voters while they're voting. This is a, they're voting in the hall, they're voting at the podium, they're voting with cameras shooting down on them. And I'm saying this again, in this meeting to the council, that camera needs to come down or be covered, and voters are voting in the wide open space where any employee can walk out of any department and pass by these, and council members, it needs resolving.
Well, without this fraud going on, maybe, hell, not a bad idea.
Well, that's, 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 we can control and have cameras, but don't, nobody is supposed to have cameras shooting down on you while you're voting.
Not supposed to, not supposed to.
We'll get with Ms., I'll get, get with Ms. Harrison, and see what we can do.
But what's today, what's the last day for them doing that, coming in during the?
No, it was just for, uh, uh, no, for the vote, voting application.
Okay.
It was, it was the last day for them. Okay, still with Ms. Harrison, uh, see, I keep with her tonight, and see what we can do, move forward with it, if it takes throwing something over her camera, whatever. I, thank you for your point, Councilwoman Benjamin. Uh, that has all, uh, justice for tonight, and for tomorrow, uh, I want to put on a conservative agenda. Our next council meeting is gonna be October twenty-fifth, and by that being on Election Day, uh, we're gonna move it to September the first. Our next council meeting and our next work session will be August thirty-first. Uh, we're gonna have, I will put that on the conservative agenda so we can vote on it, uh, and change, uh, our council meeting. But that would be part of it. Uh, our next meeting is gonna be on, our next day, which is twenty-fifth. Councilwoman, go ahead. Yeah, this is, sure, Mr. President. All right, all right. Are you gonna put on a conservative agenda tomorrow, the council approved the eighteen hundred dollars for all those employees that did not benefit the first go around? I, I was just gonna, you could tell my mouth, um, yeah. Yeah, we were allowed to trick them to find this department, because, uh, the good thing for this, for distributing this eighteen hundred, because if we don't do it immediately, we would take advice from our attorneys and we would discuss it.
Yes, sir, it can go, once we find the amount, and I do count it, the government, Councilwoman Jackson said, you know, not tomorrow, but, uh, somewhere down, down the line, but at least how much it's gonna cost us.
I agree, I, yes, sir, we're putting, we're putting on that. And, uh, any other concerns that you would like to, uh, place on the conservative agenda? I know, uh, Ms. Allison, she's on listening now, and, uh, she does a great job in getting that conservative agenda together. So if there's anything that we missed, uh, could, could, Mr., Mr. President, could we go on record? Could we go on record of supporting the Secretary of State, that they have already, uh, told us that they will be intervening into our election, because we go on record of welcoming their intervention?
Oh, yes, I mean, it's ceremony, yeah, but we can make it part of the minutes, yes.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Uh.
President.
Councilwoman.
Can you, can you add, um, the, to the conservative agenda, the, the, um, the backpack sprayers? I think that's correct, nice.
Yes, ma'am.
The police department, fire department, and, and still being ordered by the council for a public building?
Yes, ma'am, that would be fine. Uh, and, uh, I will say this with, with, with pride. Uh, given, I will say, I don't have to worry about doing the conservative agenda, so I keep with her.
Uh, I just, I want to make sure everyone knows that, uh, I'm.
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Councilwoman Benjamin, the council, the chemicals already included with backpack supplies, you need to make this just minute important for that. So, only as you said, so, we don't have the, the, that's why I'm gonna bring it up tomorrow, but I needed to bring it, bring it up tonight, so council wouldn't be surprised, for the chemicals, the chief doesn't have the chemicals, so can we do this, council members, to approve, uh, the chemical, the sprayer as an order for, uh, the, the city court, uh, Election Day, T P E flag?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Then, then by this, we'll, we'll, we'll.
I hope that, all right. Are there any other questions, comments, at this time? All right, thank you, uh, thank you, council members, for the, for the meeting, and good night.
Good night.